Amen.
Thank you, Trustee DeRosa. Moving on to item 2.1, the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Trustee Antomasi, seconded by Trustee, okay, Trustee O'Brien. Can we, can we fix the, the signs? Because I'm fearful that I'm going to actually call you by the wrong name. It's just like being in grade five with the supply teacher all over again. Thank you. Okay, moving to item 2.2, approval of minutes of the December 10th, 2019 policy meeting. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Trustee Antomasi, seconded by Trustee Duarte. Thank you. All in favor? Motion passes. Item number three, declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any declarations? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 4.1, inaction items. 4.1, Policy II-38, Educational Research. We've got Ms. Collmore here. If you want to, do we want to read the motion first, or? Yeah, sorry. I'll go back to reading the motion first. So be it that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy II-38 Educational Research be forwarded along with amendments to the January 21st, 2020 regular board meeting for approval. Can I, Trustee Antomasi, seconded, Trustee Duarte. Put it over to you now. Thanks, sorry about that.
Through you, Madam Chair. So this policy is returning to the Policy Committee earlier than scheduled for consideration of the third requirement. Since this year is also a school climate administration year, we have some evidence to provide to you to show you how this current requirement will, or is affecting survey administration. At its last renewal in 1718, a sentence regarding the consent procedure was added by the Board of Trustees to this policy. The statement states that active consent is required for the school climate survey. Active consent procedures typically involve distributing a parent letter explaining the nature of the data collection and then providing a method to document permission. Historically, however, when administering the school climate survey, our school board, as well as others, have traditionally distributed a parent letter explaining the nature of the data collection and then provide a method for retraction. And this process is known as a passive consent procedure. It's important to note that when a board wants to hear from a large group of students that is representative of the school population, a passive procedure is more inclusive as it tends to lead to higher response rates compared to an active procedure. In comparison, in our last cycle of the school climate survey in 1718, we utilized a passive consent procedure. Had one for 90% in our elementary panel and just over 80% in our secondary panel. Having a passive consent procedure allows us to capture student voice from a group of students, a large group of students. And it also, it, to hear from those students who are underrepresented, people who may be at risk, who are new to the country, or who are new to our school community. These are the students that often need the most support, so it's important to capture their voices as well. Following the current policy, we began the current process of collecting consent with our schools in September of 2019. And we've given them multiple reminders, as we knew it would be time-consuming and it would also take some time to organize this new procedure within our schools. So after four months of this new policy, we have parental permission from just over 30% of our elementary panel and just over 9% from our secondary panel. So this is percentages of students who will, who have been, who have been given parental permission to participate, so they will be invited to participate. But this doesn't necessarily mean that this is going to be our final response rate numbers, as kids can be not there that day, or they can actually decline to participate themselves. In any of these cases, these are very low numbers. And if they remain this way, we would have to use suppression rules when we are disseminating the results. Such a low response rate is not representative of the student voice, which is important if you want to make effective changes to our plans for our schools. Essentially, we won't be able to use this data or share the data if the response rates continue to be low. And even some of our school administrators had voiced some concern about how they would introduce the survey into the classroom if the majority of their class doesn't have permission to participate. So just to summarize, we will not be able to use student voice data if these response rates continue to be low. They are not representative of the student population, which is how we tend to report the data afterwards. Requiring active consent to the school climate survey reduces our ability to use data, and it also reduces our ability to satisfy the ministry mandate to collect and share this data with our safe and accepting school teams. And of particular importance, data will be missing on things like safety and bullying, positive relationships, inclusion and acceptance, mental health and well-being, and risky behaviors such as vaping and smoking. As such, the third requirement in this policy was modified to remove the statement pertaining to active consent. Historically, we have not had this requirement in the policy, as data collected on the school climate is actually mandated by the ministry, and it's used to help establish and maintain our safe and inclusive learning environment. Often consent process for the school climate survey with other ministry mandated collections in our boards, as the EDI, the IAC kindergarten survey, and the EQA questionnaire, all of which use a passive consent. The revised policy is attached for your review and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open the floor to any questions, starting with Trustee Agnew, then to Trustee Duarte, and then to Trustee O'Brien.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Dr. Collmore. This is the tell them from me survey, right? Is that, is the school, I mean, it's changed, but is that the same concept? Is that the survey we're referring to?
So through you, Madam Chair, that's correct. It's, it's the school climate survey. We're no longer using the tell them from me.
Right.
Not through the learning bar, but yes, it's that.
So it's that student saying, this is from me. I'm telling you.
To them.
This is how I feel about X, Y, Z, and all these different areas.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Duarte.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Secretary Daly. After four months, we have parental permission of 30% and 9% of secondary. I know for sure that in the elementary schools, we have parental permission from the consent form, but in secondary, I don't seem to, to recollect receiving that. Are we doing it in secondary, or why are we not doing it in secondary, if not?
Through you, Madam Chair. It, the information has gone out to all of our students. Dr. Collmore's shaking.
Madam Chair, so communication has gone. And committee. They have. Semester, so it's. Some of. To be. Gone out.
Was it in the. Respond to, comes home, emails, I'm not sure.
Through you, Madam Chair. Out through a memo, it to the school administrator.
Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through your, Madam Chair, to Ms. Collmore. What is done with the results of this survey?
Through you. Are used for school improvement planning. So the school improvement planning team, those reports. It's. Used for. One of the examples off the top of my head.
Question. The suppression rules apply. What does the ministry do then?
So with respect to the ministry, it's ended that we collect this data every two years. So I think with respect to our reports to the ministry, we say, yes, we did it. But more importantly, what's going to see is the use of the data for our actual schools. So our school administrators are used to getting this information to include it in their SIP planning or for their teams. And that wouldn't be possible if they have a low response rate.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through Madam Chair. That was kind of a general response, like what do you do with the results? But we've had like several years of tell them from me, and then the school climate survey. What has been some concrete impact in that, what did you just call it? Improvement plan, school improvement plan? Thank you.
So, so we typically leave it up to the school administrators as to how they actually implement, or what they decide to use, what bits of the report from the school climate results they use. So it's, it's hard for me to give concrete examples, because every school is different. I know that, for example, some of our elementary schools use the, like, just use the data with respect to how students are feeling, with respect to like teacher-student relationships, and if they need to build that capacity a little bit more. So every school is a little bit different, so it's hard to give exact examples.
Trustee Agnew? Trustee, I've got, Trustee Agnew.
Yeah, give you an example of. Yeah, just to follow up, maybe Superintendent Ballough or someone has a concrete example.
So, I mean, an example, more so from a, I guess, a council perspective, is we, we had, on an annual basis, utilized the information that came back from that survey, even though it was every two years, to look at our programs. So, you know, we would take a look and see, okay, we have program money to spend. What do we deem to be a priority in the school from an engagement perspective, from a student and parent engagement perspective? And so, you know, we might look at the survey results and say, wow, a big chunk of our grade sixes and sevens are experiencing a ton of anxiety, even as, you know, they're worrying about high school, they're not even there yet. So identifying that the anxiety rates were high and things like that, then we would sort of take a look at a program and say, okay, should we be bringing in a speaker to help bridge that gap and increase that communication between, you know, home and the students to help them manage what has clearly been identified by the students as being some concerns? We would take a look at that from a council perspective on things like the program. For school improvement plans, we would take a look at, were students concerned about the amount of technology support they had? So did we need to buy some more iPads? Did we need to utilize the money in that kind of fashion? Were they looking for an opportunity for increased bonding in that? Do a night where we brought in the grade sevens or the grade sixes to have a girl night in, or to have? So, you know, from a firsthand perspective, that's where we, as a school, utilizing the information that was coming directly from that survey. So it gave us hard, concrete data to say, these are some concerns coming forward from our students. What can we, as a school community, be doing to support them and assist them with some of these things that they've brought forward?
Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through Madam Chair, to Ms. Collmore again. Would it be possible for the trustees to see the questions that were presented to us in camera?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the survey is being developed in-house, this, this administration cycle. So if that is the will of the board, then yes, they could see the questions. You couldn't take away the questions, or leave a copy of the questions, because that's not typical.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through Madam Chair. So I was on the side of parents giving active consent, because then they can be aware of what's going on. And I don't know, I was looking at the results, and, and then that they'd like to probably see the survey questions. Maybe it's that the results are so low, do you think it means that parents don't interested in having their children surveyed, or any other comments?
So I, can I make a comment, sorry, do you mind? From my perspective, and I come from a very small school and a very small community where people share a lot of information, when there is so much of that information that comes home, people don't pay attention to it, unless it's something that, they don't see it as important that they need to fill it out. So it is nothing that they don't want them to. They actually enjoy having, I know for our school, it was beneficial when we were dealing with some challenges with the students. Those surveys help us plan the whole entire year, not just from the principals and the administration, but as I think Trustee Agnew said, from a council perspective as well. Really are, they're geared to the students. And I don't, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason why we don't want to see the questions is because we don't want to skew what the results are. And regardless, and we don't want the parents influencing the students, because really it's supposed to be perspective from the student and how they feel as well at school. We need to get an accurate read on it, because what they may not be saying at home could be, they feel safe in that kind of controlled environment. Am I, am I off on that?
Nope, that's correct. So I'm, sorry, Trustee Murphy.
I think if I recall back to my university days in marketing research, anytime you ask for an active response, your rates are typically low. So a general survey, 2%, 4%. If you have of interest and you get 30%, that's considered a very good response. So it's not, it's not unusual to see those responses. Yes, if we want to get large volumes of data, you need to do it in a passive manner.
Director Daly, and then Trustee.
I would just suggest and remind trustees as well that we will be entering into the next strategic planning process a little bit later on this year, and into next year. So this could be some valuable feedback from our students for us to consider in terms of how we're moving forward as a board on a number of, on a number of issues.
Trustee Carabella, and then Trustee Duarte.
Okay, so just back to trustees, through you, Madam Chair, through Trustee O'Brien's request to see the questions. Would we be able to see the questions before we agree, or have, see the questions at some point?
Are you asking that we put it to, I think.
A motion?
Yeah, we can put it forward to ask what all trustees are in regards to how they feel about that, but I, sorry, Trustee Agnew, do we want to finish what her question is first, and then we can move on to you, or do you have a comment? I think my only comment to that would be, again, recognizing that there could be some manipulation or some change in the results when we do publish those questions in advance. I think in the spirit of maybe trying to understand more about the context of the survey perhaps, we could take a look more at what the themes are, the different categories that are being asked. You know, that might give a better sense of the type of information we're trying to extract versus the specific questions that are coming back. I don't know if that would be a good compromise. But I am always, and again, you know, I just, I think we have to trust our research department. We have to allow them, they're professionals, this is what they do. And I just think we have to trust them to develop the questions in the best way that they see to get the responses they're looking for. And I know that they're always cognizant of the way that those questions are worded, so as not to elicit any emotions from people, or minimize sort of any trauma you might have going through those responses.
Through you, Madam Chair, so that's correct. We've definitely, in the past, with our, through our information letters, shared the topics, the sort of categories of questions that we're asking. We even give some examples, but we don't actually share the entire range of questions. We will be working with our communications department later in February to develop a plan about how to get the message across, about the importance and the purpose of the data collection, how, and give examples of how things will be used afterwards. So that's all sort of part of the plan.
Trustee Duarte, you had to, and then.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just a simple question here. Why are we using the word climate here? Is it something which is mandated by the Education Act? I just want to understand that, because it can be taken in a wrong way.
Through you, Madam Chair. That's correct. The wording is from the Ministry of Education, from that.
Actually, I'm going to pass it over to Trustee O'Brien. Unless we have something new to discuss, we're going to move on with this. Okay, Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you. I think themes with a few sample questions would certainly just demystify any fear of this. That's I behalf of that.
Sure. I'm going to ask a question, though. Why do we need, why do we need to see the questions? Are we, is there a concern? Like, what is the, what is the mitigating factor that we need to now get? This, these surveys have been going on for, how many years? It's every two years, but it's been going on for a long period of time. What is the concern? Like, I'm concerned that we're now going to try to interject. I want to understand why we all of a sudden want, need to see questions when, like, is there a concern, a valid concern that has been brought forward by a parent that has said that this has caused harm to their child, or that they don't want them participating in it? I'm worried that we're changing something that has, and in, from my own personal experience, and I'm speaking to it, I don't know who else here who has sat on parent council, who has seen the results of these surveys, and how they've actually helped in regards to the well-being of the child, and the. Question. Why all of a sudden there's a question to the questions that are being asked?
Thank you, through Madam Chair. It's a good question about, I guess, it comes from me. I wondered why a board, like, six months ago voted for active consent after years of that, too. So I'm wondering the same thing.
So if I go back to the actual, that policy. Correct me if I'm wrong, it was like a 5-4, or in regards to changing it? It wasn't a unanimous, and I don't even think it was 5-4. I think it was 4-3, because there was trustees that were absent at meeting, and then at the board, there was people that were also absent, so that's why it passed. And it was brought forward by Trustee Carabella in regards to a concern from, an email from one parent in regards to emails. Am I wrong?
I can't remember. No one parent did, and her son, who was in grade five, came home with a question that upset her and upset their family. And it was like a, you know, I, I meant to call her, I can get back to you about that question.
Like, I know there was, there was, it came from one parent, I believe, is the only concern that we heard. Does anybody else have any recollection? Trustee Agnew?
Clarification, because I, I think we're, so if I'm understanding this correctly, the parents still have an option to opt out, correct? So they don't have the student to participate, if I'm correct.
Madam Chair, correct.
Parent is concerned that there could be something there that might be harmful to their child, or they might be war trigger. African correspondence has gone, with respect to identifying the different topic areas, they can still say, I'd rather my child didn't do this, right? Okay.
Trustee Antomasi, and then Trustee Duarte.
So my question's pretty simple. Is there something that the principals are doing that may be hindering the response rate? Is it perhaps a matter of using their discretion, whether or not it's getting out to all the parents? And the follow-up to that would be, or sorry, in agreement with Trustee Agnew, I don't think we need to look at the question. I think that skews the survey. Typically, that never happens, and I think we should be satisfied with just looking at the topics.
Trustee Duarte.
Through you, Madam Chair. Can I make a suggestion that whoever's interested in questions. And those who are not, don't.
So I, I, I would just, I would disagree with that. I think we need to agree as a general consensus here at the table on whether or not those questions are, are shared. And I, and I, I don't get the feel that everybody's in agreement with us interfering with a controlled study. So I, I get, unless we know, like, if we, one parent who is, but then there's a chain that they can follow in regards to deal with it, and they can refuse to have their children opt out of it. But if, for one parent out of how many years we have done this, it concerns me that we're now trying to change a process which could impact how people respond to this. I think we, we're missing the point. This isn't about parents. The survey isn't for parents. The survey's for the student, and we want them to be able to answer it. And we need to trust that the people administering this are following our Catholic values, and everything falls in line, and we're following ministry guidelines as well. So I will, we can entertain the fact that, and we'll go around the table to see if we want the questions, questions versus theme. Okay? So I'll start with Trustee DeRosa. Would you want the question shared with you?
At least a theme, I think it would be beneficial for us to understand where the basis of the survey would be, at the very least. I'm not so much concerned about the sharing of questions beyond this, this gathering, because we are responsibly elected individuals, who are expected to act properly. And if anything, who knows, maybe it may add. Our contributions or our input into the questions may add to the value of the questions themselves. Don't know.
So that's, that's a keep it the way it is, which is with the theme, as long as the theme is shared?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Trustee, Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through Madam Chair. I would go with themes with a couple of questions, but I'm really not going to lose sleep over this.
Trustee Carabella.
I'd like to see the questions.
Thank you.
Theme only.
Trustee Duarte.
I'll go with the theme.
Through you, Trustee Agnew.
I'm fine, as is.
Trustee Murphy.
I would just like to see the results. I don't want to see theme or anything else.
So the theme is already provided.
Okay.
So it's usually, we have the theme of the climate survey, so, so the, the general consensus is, is that we'll leave it. So we've got a motion on the floor. I'm going to end the discussion at this point. Is it, anything new?
So maybe the only question that I'd like to put forward to everybody is, what can we do better to reach more people? And I don't think we've really discussed that.
What, sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, Trustee Antomasi, but the statement earlier was that when there wasn't required consent, the results were 90% response from elementary, 80% from secondary. So that's a pretty significant response rate. But we're only getting it now because they have to sign a consent, so they're only participating if their parents allow them. Change the policy as, as presented.
Go back to where it was before.
Right. So that's the motion on the table. Okay. So we'll start with you, Trustee Antomasi. Are you in favor?
Yes.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carata. Sorry, I'm sorry, not you being here, apologize.
In favor, very much so.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Agnew.
Favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Policy passes. It'll be presented at the next policy meeting. Thank you for the discussions. Moving on to item 4.2, Policy II-7. Can I get a motion that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy II-17 Attendance Support Program be forwarded to the January 21st, 2020 regular board meeting for approval? Can I get a mover? Trustee Duarte, seconder, Trustee Antomasi, and Superintendent O'Hara. We'll turn the floor over to you to talk about the changes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. The changes are extremely minor. Essentially, we have had some of our QP locals that have gone through reorganizations, and so their numbering has changed, and so we're reflecting that in the policy. Other than that, it's, it is a status quo.
Thank you. I'll open the floor to any questions. Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through Madam Chair. I have a question about the procedure that accompanies this policy, but I don't mind waiting. Yep, no worries.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, do you have any questions?
Yes, I'm just trying to find it. I, it's on page two of three, and it talks about the medical, dental that they go to and that they need to seek authorization. Is it? Thank you. Okay, right. So I'm wondering, who do they seek that from? Is it their principal, or do they ask the supervising officer? Who do they seek author?
Should Superintendent O'Hara?
Again, through the, through you, Madam Chair. Authorization is generally through the HR department for leaves.
Sorry, just follow-up. I think it was just about the medical and, oh, like dental. Would that be a serious, that's not like a leave of absence, that's just.
No, again, through the chair. Medical, we encourage our employees to make routine medical, dental appointments outside of work hours. We can't insist on that with our employees. Again, we encourage them to do that. There are going to be some changes which, which have been approved, which I'll be talking to you about at the next board meeting, where one particular settlement that happened centrally now has tightened that up. But that's one particular group, and again, I will expand on that in camera at the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Did I see, is there any other questions? Okay. Oh, Trustee Carabella.
I have some questions, but regarding the procedure, the companies, will we discuss that later?
We'll, we'll get to the procedure one more.
Okay, thank you.
There being no further questions, we'll go to a vote. Trustee DeRosa. Trustee Carata.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
Policy will be presented to the next board meeting. Moving on to item 4.3, policy I-01. Can I have a mover that the policy committee recommends that policy I-01 Catholic support, school support be forwarded to the January 21st, 2020 regular board meeting for approval? Trustee Tomasi, a seconder, trustee Duarte, trustee DeRosa, can you just turn off your mic? Thank you. And I will pass it on to superintendent Lofts.
Thank you through, Madam Chair. There's really no change to this policy at all, it's just basically when we looked at, reviewed, and moved forward, so there's been no changes to any of the wording or anything on this policy.
Thank you. Any questions? Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through, Madam Chair. During the election, I found a lot of Catholic ratepayers told me that they were quite surprised when they got to the voting booth that they were not on the Catholic voters list. And I found that they, they were not aware that if they bought or sold a new home, that the tax would default to the public board, oversight on their part. Now, the policy does state at the bottom, "The board will make every effort to inform the school community and Catholic community members of the importance to direct their support to the Catholic system by making this policy and other relevant information available on the board website, school websites, and parish bulletins." So, it's, just a suggestion, I, there's no procedure, a copy of this, I don't think, because there's listed. So, I wonder, and I don't know if you read the policy, but it was surprisingly a number of people, they move homes, they didn't know, they defaulted, they got there, and sure enough, they were not on the list, so they couldn't vote. If in that communication, that it could, that ratepayers could be, that if you do buy and sell a new home, that you do default to the public system, I just a suggestion, that's all. Thank you.
I know it is posted on the school, or the board website, and in the individual school websites, it says, ensure that you're, you know, supporting the Catholic school board. There is, there is reminders on all of those websites, not specifically to what you're saying, but...
It's, I wouldn't have brought it up, but they specifically said that, that when they moved, they didn't know that when they moved to a condo that they were, that you defaulted. I know OCS has tried to work on this too, but I think, and it is on the onus of the tax, of the ratepayer to do that, so...
Trustee Murphy, and then?
But the ratepayer could sign, can form at the polling booth and be able to vote, so it's, it's actually pretty simple, I had a few neighbors that did that.
Except for some...
That's why I'm sitting here.
Some polls actually refused, some polls actually refused, yeah, yeah. I got calls from people that, yeah, so, it's, it has, that's the municipal rules and how they train the scrutiny errors is a different story, so Director Daley's...
I just had a question for, for trustee O'Brien. Was that typically people, ratepayers who didn't have students in the system?
Yes. It could have been.
Trustee DeRosa, and then trustee Tomasi?
I think it, it would be beneficial to find maybe some way to reinforce that, that point to people who don't think about it. I don't know how, but it might be worth while.
I'm not ignoring you, Ms. Wynden.
If I may respond through you, Madam Chair, we actually have launched that particular campaign several times. The last time we launched it was during the last municipal election, and not only did we push information out to all parents in our system, we actually shared it with parishes as well. And whether or not it got into the parish bulletin, but we provided those card, those postcards as well, in hard copy for parishioners who maybe didn't have access to a computer. So we try as much as we can, it's, you know, it's a difficult message, unfortunately, to get out, but if you click on the button, that is on each one of our school websites, and on our board website, and on the trustee newsletter, it's, we, if you click on it, you'll see a checklist, and it tells you, if you have moved, it will automatically redirect. So we've been pretty clear about that, it's just getting people to pay attention.
And I would add further through you, Madam Chair, is upon registration, that's one of the questions that the school secretary asks a parent when they move into a school community, and they have a form to designate, that the parent checks off.
We're losing money, so I just, I don't put it...
Whatever, whatever we can do helps, obviously, so, okay. Any, sorry, superintendent?
Through you, Madam Chair. So there is a, there is a method of doing this, it's been done before, it gets done at other levels of government, and that is to petition the city and ask them to put a flyer, tax billing, that goes out to ratepayers the year of the election. So if we were to petition the various cities that are involved, I think we can achieve that via that.
I think that's a great idea, trustee Tomasi, and I think the chair of our board should spearhead that, and I think that it would be a wonderful thing that our chair should...
So can I defer, can I defer this to Secretary Daley?
No, our, our vice chair would be great in writing to, or, you know, the respective municipalities to, to reinforce and maybe see if we can't get it. Yeah, if you write the letter, we'll all sign off on it, and we'll send it to... Trustee Carabella?
Do we have an update from OCSTA on that? Because they do, I think it's one of their resolutions that they continue to try and have, is it NPAC, announce, or keep, to keep your own, to keep your own, like, once you declare, that it doesn't default?
So, we'll, we'll go to a vote. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Tomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carata?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Policy will be presented to the next board meeting. Moving on to item 4.4, policy I-21 Corporate and Community Investment in Education. So can I have a mover that the policy committee recommends that policy I-21 Corporate and Community Investment in Education be forwarded to the January 21st, 2020 regular board meeting for approval? Trustee Tomasi, can I get a seconder? Trustee Carabella? And we've got superintendent Lofts.
Thank you through, Madam Chair. Again, this one has very, as well, just some wording changes on the second page, just basically changing it to kind of, to better English for... So that's through my...
Laughing at you, I promise we're not, I'm laughing at him. No, 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 no. I'll open the floor to any questions? Okay, so I'll take it to a vote. We'll start with trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Trustee Carata?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Tomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Okay, policy passes, it'll be presented at the next board meeting. Moving on to item 4.5, policy II-24 Home-to-School Transportation. Can I get anybody to move that the policy committee recommends that policy II-24 Home-to-School Student Transportation be forwarded along with amendments to January 21st, 2020 regular board meeting for approval? Trustee O'Brien, seconded by trustee Murphy. Share the love tonight. I've got superintendent Lofts?
Through you, Madam Chair, I could defer to senior manager Fred Tebow?
Through you, Madam Chair. In terms of the changes that were made to the policy, there's a few things. First and foremost, we'll start with easy ones. The first thing we want to do is put in conformity with the new policy format that we have, so we have the addition of the application and scope, so notice that there's been some of the wording moved there, uplinks to in reference section, the operating procedures of student transportation services, so parents know exactly where to find additional information that relates to this policy particularly. And then, the third change that occurred was as a result of discussions that we had at our last Board of Directors meeting at HSTS. There was a discussion around perhaps providing a little bit more transparency and clarity as to the overall methodology, as to how home-to-school distance is calculated, so being from the property lot line of the home, just one to the nearest property lot line of the school, just so people better understood how that was calculated, because, you know, we live in the day age now where Google map apps, tracker apps are all available, giving us distance criteria, so when parents are contested, trying to figure out, okay, well, how do we measure the 1.6 for elementary, or 1 point, or 3.2 for secondary, giving them a little bit of a basis as to how it's done, and understanding that it's not necessarily what, the same methodology as Google, gives them a little bit more of an understanding, so they can see how we're consistently applying that distant measure, distance measurement. It also relates to the HSTS procedure that goes into further detail as to some of the refinements and what have you with that methodology. So, open to any questions.
Thank you. I'll open the floor to any questions. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you through, Madam Chair. One is just a little housekeeping, because you interchange the words students and pupils, and I remember that we were trying to use the word student, but, from last board, so in, under requirements, the first number, it's just pupils, anyways, it's just a small thing, if you want to change it to students or not. And then I was wondering about 1.3, under requirements, validated physical, emotional, developmental, and/or disciplinary reasons. So, what does, what, could we have clarification on validated? What would that look like?
Through, Madam Chair, it would be an example of, if a student broke their leg, or a student had difficulty walking, or, you know, certain situations like that, or can't necessarily make their way to school, and it can be demonstrated that through a doctor's note, a medical note, that that is the concern, then that's where we'll say, okay, we'll, we'll provide transportation in light of those facts. So that's, that's where the validation comes in, is with doctors' notes.
Any other questions? Okay, trustee Carabella, we have to wait for trustee Murphy to...
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. And so, number, point number six, I also was curious as to, or not curious, but clarification, what would be an example of that? So, they would alter the transportation services as a result of a safety concern because of their identific, validated needs of student identification grounds. So what would be an example if, like, if someone's being, I was thinking, is it because someone's being bullied because of that grounds, and is, would it be a bullying thing? And then, how would we address bullying? Or, if you have another example, maybe I'm incorrect?
Through, Madam Chair, I would say it's what I would call more of a catch-all, so it encompasses many things. It can be a physical barrier, or crossing an arterial, or it can be whether or not, you know, there's, there's the available needs for the student to be picked up at a bus stop, or things like, it, it's, there's a number of examples as to what it would be. So it's essentially that catch-all phrase that says, if there's a validated safety concern where the student may not be able to get from home to school safely, or to their bus stop, or there's a, there's an impediment that's in place, that we have, you know, the authority, or we have the wherewithal to make those changes to the safety of students.
Thanks, through, Madam Chair. So Fred, would it be something like, where you have accessible transportation that might stop at a child's home as opposed to stopping at a regular bus stop because that child isn't able to leave their house to go up to where the typical, so we made a range for the bus to pick them up at their home because of things like that? Okay.
Through, Madam Chair, yes, it could be that, or it could not even be related to a specific student impairment or something, it could be just as simple as, we don't want an elementary student crossing arterial roads. So it's, it's all and above, just saying that, we're trying to always ensure the safety of the student when we're looking at things like this.
If there's no further questions, we'll take it to a vote. Trustee?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Carata?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Tomasi?
In favor.
Policy will be presented to the next board meeting, thank you. Moving on to item 4.6, policy II-47, fees for learning materials, programs, and curricular and co-curricular activities. Can I have a mover that the policy committee recommends that policy II-47 fees for learning materials, programs, and curricular and co-curricular activities be forwarded to the January 21st, 2020 regular board meeting for approval? Trustee Tomasi, a seconder, trustee Duarte. I will pass this over to superintendent Lofts.
Thank you through, Madam Chair. Again, this one has very few adjustments made to it prior to the last time it was reviewed.
Okay, any questions? Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through, Madam Chair, to Secretary Daley. What, how would you define the word co-curricular?
Probably the same way I would define extracurricular.
Okay, I, I received a phone call from a parent, and they said they were charged for attending a family Christmas night, so would that be considered co-curricular?
That would be considered an extracurricular event, yeah. So sometimes those types of events that are voluntary in nature, that students aren't mandated to attend, parents may be asked to make a contribution to craft night of $2, $5, $3. I've had those questions, or those requests come to my own house.
The other que, oh, sorry, trustee DeRosa, and then trustee Duarte?
Just a point of curiosity, do we know, do we track how much we generate in fees? Do we have, just by order of magnitude?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. Schools, both from board and at school level, schools are required to report on their school-generated funds on their board websites, so that, that information's available on all school websites.
Just, we don't have a, we don't have a base, we don't have a, an order of magnitude number, is it 5,000? I'll, I'll go to the website and find out.
It's, it's much more than 5,000. I'll, through you, Madam Chair, maybe superintendent Lofts could speak to it in greater detail.
Sure, through you, Madam Chair. It's, I'm going to say roughly between 12 and a half to 13 million dollars across the board.
Oh, is that number? Yeah. Sorry, I believe trustee Duarte, and then, it was dope, but trustee Duarte had the floor prior, so trustee Duarte, then trustee O'Brien, and then trustee Agnew?
Through you, Madam Chair. A question on student activity fees, I can't find that particular statement here, but we charge a student activity fee of $65 in high school. At the same time, we make it very clear to parents that, right? And then we, we do not charge fees for other activities throughout the years, like, you know, agenda and stuff like that. So what's the point in charging a fee and saying it's voluntary, and then, most of the parents can say, I'm not paying that fee. So what's the point in having a fee when it's totally voluntary?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's voluntary by mandate, so parents have to be made aware that it's a voluntary fee. My experience, and it's been a while since I've been a high school principal, but my experience was very few parents chose not to pay the fee, a relative handful each year, so it does have to be voluntary by, by legislation. Parents have to be made aware that it's not required.
Chair, so, this fee basically is charged to cover expenses throughout the school year. So if those parents are not contributing the voluntary fee, but they still get to participate in all the activities throughout the year, then how does it become fair for other students paying them?
Through you, Madam Chair. So schools could, in the event of, if an activity fee is used for the agenda, or the school yearbook, or those sorts of, for lockers, schools could identify families that have not paid and deny them access to those sorts of things. I, to be quite honest with you, I would guess schools don't do that to a large extent. So in terms of the question of fairness, there certainly would be some families who, a $65 fee, especially if they had, well, even a single child, but maybe more than one, it might be an impediment for them, so I think schools do try to take that into account.
Trustee O'Brien?
Through you, Madam Chair, through secretary Daley. So, these fees are extracurricular, but that discretion of the principal, or would it be the parent council who would make those decisions?
Through you, Madam Chair. So at the secondary level, all of our, our secondary schools have the same student activity fee? fee, the same center. But in addition to that, students might be involved in other extracurricular activities that have a separate fee. So it might be athletic fee or team fee or a club fee. So I don't think, certainly at the secondary level, school councils would go through all of those individual fees, but even at secondary, school councils should be consulted in terms of school fundraising.
Trustee Agnew.
So would this be the same policy then that would apply to fees for, for Civs Days? Where, for, to be able to wear, so is it, I mean, you're probably familiar with it, but the high schools will charge $20 and it's a set amount of Civs Days. It's voluntary because they don't have to pay it, but then if they don't, they have to wear a uniform. I just, I'm just curious, because I have received, so when those emails go out at the beginning of the year, I do receive concerns from parents that they, you know, why should we have to pay for them to wear a Civs Day? Anyway, I just wonder if it's the same thing that covered that because there's no, when we're doing an activity fund, as we're saying, that's compensating for the cost of agendas and possibly yearbooks. When it's a Civs Days piece, and I understand that the component of that incorporates a, you know, a voluntary donation, there's other pieces that go with that, but at the end of the day.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to that because I also have, I need to, 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 I, I, that it's not inclusive. When we say you don't pay the $20, you can't participate in a school-wide event that is supposed to be done as a group of age students, you're, the message that is sent is if you don't pay the $20, come to school in uniform, that really isn't reflective of voluntary. That is, that's not voluntary, that's required, that's mandated.
Any- I'll, it'll be covered for this, yeah.
Okay, we'll go to a vote. Trustee DeRosa.
Favor.
Trustee Carata.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Policy will be brought forward to the next board meeting. Moving on to item 4.7, policy, sorry, I gotta get to the right policy here. Policy donation bequested to a school or to the board. Can I get someone to move that the policy committee recommends that policy V dash 07 donations bequested to a school or to the board, name be changed to policy V dash 07 bequested to a school or to the board and be forwarded along with amendments to the January 21st, 2020 regular board meeting for approval? Trustee Agnew. Trustee Antomasi and I believe Superintendent Lofts.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Maybe I'll start with as to why we remove the donations part to this, to this policy. And the reason we did was a bequest is essentially through a bill and a donation to the boards. I thought it was a redundancy to that, which is why we removed the donations part of donations bequested to a school. Some of the items that we've adjusted in this is kind of clean up some of the wording. We removed the reference to fundraising guidelines Ministry of Education and the reason we removed that was because this is a bequest to a school. So it's not like we're actively fundraising for this. It's a different situation. It's awards and items like that. Some of the other ones under the principles on page two of this report, we've kind of tried to clean those up as well. Some of the wording, we just, again, just made it superintendent of business and just for, make it not as wordy and treasurer of the board. We just kind of kept the superintendent of business as it would default to treasurer of the board in that position as well, so which is why we removed that treasurer of the board portion. We also tried to remove some of the wordiness to it, as you can see in the second point. We removed the third point outright. Again, it just seemed redundant, there was, it didn't seem, there was a require or a need there. And then the final one, we also put the $10,000 amount to align with what we have in our other policies and procedures. So there really wasn't a dollar amount there, so we thought we should align our other policies and procedures and we put that $10,000 in as well.
Trustee DeRosa.
For clarification, are we, are we replacing the word donate bequests? Or are we splitting, are we making a difference between a bequest and a donation? In which case are we talking about two policies or one?
Superintendent Lofts.
Through you, Madam Chair. I read it as we had a donation and a bequest, which is a good question, trustee DeRosa. We took it as a bequest portion because if we threw it, it's, the wording and the intent of it was more of a bequest and not necessarily a donation, which is why we went back to it and we thought, well, this is really a bequest to the board. Somebody in a will making a donation, I used it myself, but a bequest, a, a will to give some kind of award or ongoing, I guess, award to, to one of our students. So it really wasn't donation like the other donations that we had. It was a different meaning from where, from where we are. And what that I mean, it's a bequest to the board, it's through a will. And that's not really the, I don't think the donations kind of confuses it a bit by keeping that wording in there. A, a bequest is a donation to the board.
Trustee Duarte. Sorry, did you have a follow-up? Trustee DeRosa.
Again, clarification. So we don't have a donations policy anymore. We've replaced donations with bequests.
Director Daley's gonna-
I would say donations would fall under corporate investment in, in education. So the rules around donations are in policy I-21, so I think that would be covered.
Superintendent, I just did it. Madam Chair just did it again. Trustee Duarte, then trustee Carabella.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd like you, I'd like to take you to the last bullet in the policy. It says an information report for bequests in an amount of $10,000 would, would be brought to the board as an information item, whereas the policy I dash 21 corporate and community investment in education says that it would come as an action item. So I'm just curious to know why, why it comes as an action item in one and why is it an information item in the second one?
Sorry, I didn't know, are, do you wanna? I think he, I think he's passing it off to you, Superintendent Lofts.
Um, sure, that's a very, it wasn't really, there's no rhyme or reason why we had it. It was just a word we had before, but it can be changed to, to an action as well. We have it, you're right, to follow consistency with the other, we bring it as an action item, so.
I just wonder if the difference is, a, a, a bequest like a will, can you say no? I, I can't change it, I don't want it? I'm not-
Yeah, you could.
Yeah.
Well, of course.
I won't say no.
No, you wouldn't. But you could-
Yeah, that's a good one.
You could say no if it's a major supplier of yours that would be conceived as conflict. Well, what if the company's still current, right? So you could have a, a will which the money's that he holds, but he's a representative of a particular company. Let's use a clothing supplier, for instance.
So, through you, Madam Chair, can we-
Okay. So trustee Duarte and then trustee DeRosa.
Yeah, so, so could we have consistency and change it to action item?
Is, are we okay?
Through you, Madam Chair. The last bullet can be the, in 21, wherein it says the action item will be brought to the, to the board. The last bullet of-
Just a comment. I, I, like we have to be cognizant of the fact that there is, whether it's a donation or a bequest, that there are conditions attached to it. The conditions will drive whether you accept it or not. And to trustee Antomasi's point, there are, there could be situations where you've got conflicts of interest unintended that may arise as well. So, just a moment.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lofts mentioned earlier on it wasn't related to the fundraising activities or policies. So they're listed here. Should we take those off then, being them listed as the associated policies and procedures?
Through you, Madam Chair. I didn't have my mic. Yeah, you're correct. Yeah, we could take the, because they're really more of a, just a last will and testament of an individual, so it's not really fundraising guidelines that we'd be following under. So I don't see what keeping them in with, with any impact. We're going by what the actual, I guess, bequest to the school board is and looking what that document is as well, yeah.
So Janine, did you get that part? Okay. Uh, trustee Antomasi.
So the question, through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Lofts, so would, so if somebody makes a bequest after they've passed away, do we issue a receipt to the estate or can we issue?
That's a question.
Superintendent Lofts.
Through you, Madam Chair. Ah, yes, we would issue a receipt. So, yeah, we would issue the receipt. It's up to the estate to use it or not, but the receipt would be issued.
Trustee Agnew.
Can you just clarify for me again the piece just mentioned around the funding?
Through you, Madam Chair. I just was referring to what Superintendent Lofts said earlier on when he was explaining this. You were taking some other, what was it? You just said something else. You got the fundraising, yeah. Maybe, could you explain to trustee Agnew?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. We removed the fundraising guideline because we're, there's really no fundraising attached to this, to the bequest. It's outside, that does not actively go into a school and getting an activity fee or anything like that. It's quite different from that. So what trustee Carabella mentioned was that really if that's the case, then why do we have the school fundraising activity policies and procedures that we're referencing above under the associated policies and procedures in the box at the top? So, because we're not actively.
So my only thing would be back to the conversation we just had a few minutes ago with respect to the voluntary donation for Civs Days because a portion of that money collected is redirected to charity.
All right, sorry, never mind.
Carry on. I'm tired. Any other questions? Okay, so we'll go to a vote. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
Favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carata.
Favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Policy passes, it'll be brought to the next board meeting. The next item, the item on the agenda is Article 4.8, bylaw working committee. Do I need to hand over the gavel to this to have a conversation? Think I should? Okay. Do I have to leave, do you want me to leave chairs? Do it, sure. Do I have the floor, Madam Chair? I mean, Mr. Chair.
Trustee-
I've got my name there now, that's why we're interchanging.
Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you. So the reason why we requested, we had a couple of conversations, a couple of trustees had brought forward issues in regards to the bylaws. And the bylaws, it's scheduled to come up June 9th, 2020 for, with a regular cycle to be reviewed. It will be, there is a lot of items that I think that need to be addressed and need to be revised because I think some modules of orders don't fall in line with some practices. I think we've all realized right in the get-go that it will need to be streamlined. So what I've proposed is, or what I'm proposing is, is that we create a bylaw working group that is separate to the policy committee where we can meet. Superintendent Ballow would be willing, if, if that is our request, to have her work with us and, in helping us with whatever we need to, to see through. Or we can work through it however we would like to. All of us need to participate into it. If you have no will to go through the bylaws, the procedural bylaws, if you're trusting somebody else to do that, that's fine. But my suggestion is, except for from the policy meeting, that we create a working group very similar to what, what Superintendent Ballow does now when she's reviewing policies. But it'd be made up of, I think, have some recommendations that were brought forward separate from, within the administration staff. We do this in advance of the June 9th so that we can have wholesome discussions and make changes in advance of it because I think it is going to be a lengthy discussion. I'll open it up to any other comments to trustees.
Trustee DeRosa.
I think that's a very good idea and it's a word that we, is probably long overdue. I would only suggest that there's probably enough will on the table for all trustees to want to participate in the process. And you may want to consider that creating a committee of the whole. The other suggestion that I may have is that in the interest of putting some form of arms-length, I may, I'd like to suggest that we, we get an initial review done by an outside third party of the bylaws in line with the policies and then wait for the comments back, suggestions for changes and then deliberate on the, on suggestions.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I think, I like the idea of committee of the whole too in the sense that I think we all understand how important the bylaws are. And ma'am, just looking at the time, it's eight, an extra meeting, but maybe each policy meeting we set it sometime to, through like a second or something and then we get ideas to bring it back. What I was gonna, a good way, I've been in, at CPEC, we did something like that, is working on the bylaws and sort of each meeting a little bit's done and then it gets voted on at the final moment.
Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Guzzo, I want to thank you for bringing this up. It's hung over two and somebody has. I kind of think us are what, what we're, I really think it should be a committee of the whole as well, just like policy, I do it, I mean, far away, but I, I really think it would be a process, our board is bylaws.
Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm fine, like I said, it's the will of what all the trustees want if that is the decision. We could propose maybe coming a half hour prior to the policy committee as a working group because we're, we have to be here anyways if, if that works to be here at 6:30 from 6:30 to 7:00. It is 8:10, however, this is not reflective of our norm with policy committee. You know, I, I hear what trustee DeRosa says in having a third party review it. I disagree respectfully. I think maybe if we wanted to, is if we, if we had another session with a parliamentarian to make sure that we're following in line with Robert's Rules of Order would be my only comment in that because we have a choice, right? The bylaws supersede Robert's Rule of Order, working bylaws as long as, as long as there's, as long as it's, yeah, as long as it follows a certain order. We can't deviate too far, but I, I think we start with us and if we can't deal with it or we think we bring, need to bring in external, then we can look at it at that point. But I think we have enough people sitting at this table who are, are versed that can, and we've worked now through it with, for a year and a little bit, that we should be able to know what is working within our bylaws and what isn't, what's redundant, what needs clarification and move forward. And then again, obviously the staff will, will have their input and then when we come together and, and know if it's something that we make it with the staff.
And then again, obviously, the staff will have their input, and then when we come together and know if it's something that we make it with the staff as well, if we do it that way. I don't know if we want it that big at this point, or if we want to just work with the trustees and then maybe come together closer to the review.
So, I would just, you know, for the conversation that I would agree with, committee of the whole. Further to what trustee Carabella said is, we've seen a similar process, not for bylaws at CAC, but for going through the Spec Ed Plan. So, it's an undertaking that we have to take, two years, we actually start it and do it every year, break it down, identify the sections. You know, I just think it's a lot easier to take bites out of the elephant than to do it all at once. So, and also being cognizant, we have a lot of meetings to attend. It was possible to add it on to an existing policy meeting, whether that be an hour before or whatever that looked like. And we spent, you know, each meeting focused on X, Y, Z and went through that. That way, everybody can come into the meeting prepared, common policies, or a particular bylaws, might be a way of doing it as well. So, I'm in agreement with that.
Trustee Carabella. I have you down here. You got a question?
Well, I'm just thinking, so for, who will be on the committee? Like, so it would just be the trustees? Would we have Superintendent Ballow? Would the director be on it as well? How does?
Sorry, so the way I had presented it was that it would be a working committee of the trustees. Because regardless, Superintendent Ballow's going to have a working committee with, with the committee working, so they would present us. So, we can have them participate. The only advantage I would say is inviting, whether it be Superintendent Ballow or Director Daley, is if we have any clarification on what practices are that we might not realize that, that's been happening with the board. But maybe the suggestion is, is we start as a working committee with, if he takes notes, and then we come together at some point, before it comes to the final meeting as a working committee. Yeah, and I would also, like, and I would be the, see if it is will that we all meet, that I would organize separating it into sections and send it out to everybody in advance, so that we can all have a look at it in advance of our working session. So, we can organize it that way.
I think trustee Murphy was ahead of me.
Uh, thank you. I went to the doctor this week and I told him what was wrong with me. And he asked, how many years did you go to medical school? So, I agree and respect what you're saying. I, I think that, I would like to see some guidance, let's say, not, not from the outside, from an outside expert. Whether that is beginning, middle, after, at some point, just to, to kind of guide us, because I foresee that we could get into stalemates and have, maybe have some oppositions. My friend from Burlington and I tend not to agree on certain philosophical points of view. So, I would, I would like to see it, and, and I'll admit it here, if the camera's off, it's one of my shortcomings. I think I know a little bit of everything, which, I know, which, you know, so I think it would be good to have outside influence from an extra third party to guide us. We don't want them to write our bylaws, but I think, I foresee we would have have some challenge.
I speak to the issue. The reason why I put out the suggestion is because I think it would make the process a lot more efficient. And I think the process would be independent, transparent, and more efficient. With everybody's participation.
I was sort of seeing it all, all the time, maybe two owners. But I think trustee Guzzo trying to just fly so right away could be too much. Two, something in the middle, I think I would agree with, maybe a couple of meetings, then use our parliamentarian or eight parliamentarians, since we did approve one, something like that, a combination of, we do a little bit on them, we do bring in somebody to get their advice, not for authorization, but that's too strong a word, advice, but we carry on with their advice. Thank you.
Trustee Guzzo.
Do you have a comment in this? Because I'm actually, I'm going to make a motion.
Yes, sure.
I, I just know that the policy, the principal working group that I have would be really involved in reviewing the bylaws. The idea of having an ad hoc committee where staff and trustees are working together, I think, in my opinion, would be more efficient. I would be happy to resource liaise, pull in anyone from our board staff, like Andrea Swenden, for example, or others who have been through the bylaw review, she's got lots of experience there as well. I'd be happy to sort of pull in any people that we think would be helpful for the meeting. I like the idea of having the meeting maybe before our policy meetings, because sometimes they can go rather late and will be our timelines. I think that if you want to take it one chunk by chunk, have a general guideline of what pieces want to review. I think it's important people can come to the meeting prepared.
Secretary Daley.
Um, maybe I didn't, I missed some of the conversation and I can't point to off the top of my head. I can't imagine that a committee struck to deal with something so important to the board could not include the director on that committee.
Taken any more discussion before?
I can make a motion in between.
Trustee Guzzo.
So, I'd like to, I'm next up. So, I'd like to make a motion that, that bylaw working committee be struck involving all trustees, the director of the board, and whatever other superintendents required as, as needed, as resources, to meet a half hour prior to every policy meeting, prior to June 9th, 2020, review of the bylaws. And in addition to that, that should an outside, should we not be able to come to an agreement or have any issues, I'm adding this on right now, as you can tell, I'm talking off the top of my head, any issues in regards to interpretation or application of the bylaws, that a third party may be. All that to me?
Did we go a little step? Motion.
She's almost done, give her a second.
Okay, that a bylaw committee of all trustees, the director of the board, and other superintendents as resources to meet prior to the policy meetings, prior to the June meeting, and a third party may be brought in to advise as required. I can, yeah, I can send it to you to tweak it if that, is that the gist?
Do you have a second or? Trustee DeRosa. Discussion.
I'd like to make amendment to the motion.
Trustee O'Brien.
I'd like to make amendment, I'd like to make your amendment motion.
Okay.
I like to amend the word "may" to the word "will." Second. Can you read it again, please?
About the third party?
Yes.
A third party may be brought in to advise as required.
Go ahead.
As a friendly amendment. Oh, just explain why.
Trustee, trustee O'Brien.
Well, I think it does. You rule it.
We need a second to the motion. The amendment to the motion. Trustee DeRosa. Uh, discussion now.
Thank you. I don't see it as a, as a friendly amendment, trustee O'Brien, and I'll explain why. I don't think, I think it's premature for us to say that we need to bring in a third party before we even have a chance to sit down and look at it. It might be that we can work through it. So, I presented it as "may." It still lies with us, that we make a decision as a group, and if the majority of it is the will of all of the trustees, and it leaves it open to the can. But to say "we will" means that we're going to do that before we've even sat down.
That's true. I agree.
Trustee O'Brien.
I, it does mean that, and that's what I, that's why I envision, I think we have to have a third party in there, so.
Trustee DeRosa. Trustee DeRosa, turn your mic on, please.
The way I see this is even, even though we reach to a consensus on a draft, it would be wise to get a third party validation, if anything, after reaching a consensus. So, "will" is not a word that, that offend me.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I know that we've talked about having a parliamentarian help us on the bylaws. I don't see it as, as a conflict, if even we've worked on it and worked back and forth, and then at the end, it can just have a view from the parliamentarian, a bit of the, like, objective look at it.
Any more questions? So, we are going to vote on the amendment to the motion on the floor. Can we read the amendment? Janine?
That a bylaw committee be struck to include all trustees, the director of the board, and other superintendents as resources to meet prior to the policy meetings, prior to the June meeting. A third party will be brought in to advise as required.
Trustee Agnew.
Sorry, just a question. So, should we go that route? How are we going to determine who that third party's going to be?
I have.
Okay, trustee DeRosa.
I'm going to determine everything else, by consensus, by vote.
Trustee Carabella.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Like, would a third party be a parliamentarian or a lawyer, or could be that, right? We, we would vote on that as well?
At this point in time, we don't know. So... Let's proceed with the trustee Murphy.
Um, I'm going to board your brass for the vote, I think you have the vote.
Yes, trustee Murphy, we ask for the vote.
I'm opposed.
Would you like to read the, yeah?
That a bylaw committee be struck to include all trustees, the director of the board, and other superintendents as resources to meet to the, sorry, to meet prior to the policy meetings, prior to the June meeting. A third party will be brought in to advise as required.
Okay, we need some more discussion. Okay, go ahead. Trustee, trustee Murphy, turn your mic. Your mic, please.
I'm saying, it's just getting, is tightening up yours a little bit, and I don't, I don't know how to do that. For what power, when, what, what have you.
Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the Murphy point is, until we start working on it, we don't even know what that third party will look like. It could be a parliamentarian, it could be a lawyer, it could be some more staff, staff. So, by saying "we will" means regardless of what happens, we have to bring in a third party to come in. That's what that motion raises, by saying "we may." It still lays with us, make that decision, and we need to make that decision. That's why I left it as that, and we're not, not saying no again. We'll, we'll, we'll delay to make that decision now without even entering into the bylaw discussions. It has to be done.
I'll give the mic to Andrew.
Sorry, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. If I can just offer my opinion. Current set of bylaws that we have are, as you know, they're a bit of a mess. They're very inconsistent with Robert's rules. Using them to follow. If we had reviewed them with either a lawyer or a parliamentarian, and any parliamentarian or lawyer looks at them will tell you they're inconsistent, even within themselves, inconsistent with Robert's rules, and even the weights that they give to certain votes are not consistent with Robert's rules, or within the bylaws themselves. I think it's probably, I'm, I don't, I don't know if the suggestion here is, it doesn't sound like you want an expert to write them. I think it would be good practice to have an expert, and you do, you can decide later who that expert is, I think either a lawyer or a parliamentarian, to look at them just to make sure before you prove them that they are actually consistent with Robert's rules and they're solid. I think that's what you would want. It'd be good practice.
Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you to you, Mr. Chair. In the motion, there is the phrase "as required." I think that gives us the leeway. We don't have to bring the person in until it is required, and we can even decide that. I think there's enough leeway in that motion that we bring the expert in when we need them and who it is, so. That's why I'm going to support this motion.
Trust, trustee DeRosa, I saw your hand up.
That's okay, I'm putting it down.
Okay, any more discussion on this? Are we now ready to vote? Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
This is on the amendment, correct?
Yep.
Opposed.
You're voting on the amendment.
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carata.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
And I'll vote in favor.
Okay, moving on to item 6.1, as there's no discussion item. Administrative Procedure VI-76, Attendance Support Program, Superintendent O'Hara.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. There are some significant changes to the procedure that's before you. Again, there are several housekeeping changes which are similar to the policy around, again, reflecting the new numbering of our unions. The significant change really would be how we look at establishing the threshold for employees to be brought in to have conversations under the Attendance Support Program. And so, staff is looking at moving from a employee group average to the board average that would be established. This would allow us to be able to probably make more gains in terms of being able to have conversations with employees where we could influence change. So, those employees, I think that's, that's usually over 14 days, but not getting into long extended, short-term disability type leaves. We have gone and had this, these changes reviewed by legal counsel, because certainly we have a long history of, of how we operate these policies in the past, this, this procedure in the past. And with the suggestion from legal counsel would be, we would need to put our union partners on notice of the change and have the change effective September of 2020, to give them again an opportunity to, to understand the change and notice, and to resolve any possible stomp or argument that may be raised by our unions. So, again, that's the major change. It's moving from an employee group average to a board average, again, to, to establish the threshold. So, happy to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Sorry, I have a question. It's kind of weird. Is there language in any of the collective agreements that precludes you changing? the collective agreements that precludes you changing a policy without discussion with the union, and what is the pushback in regards to it?
No.
Because this is, for some of these groups, the unionized groups, it could have a huge impact on, it'll decrease the threshold for them, which means a higher attendance management, uh, group of employees.
So, there isn't any language in the collective agreement that would restrict us from doing this, uh, recognizing that we are in bargain currently, uh, with all of our employee groups, it would be important for us to give them advance notice of that, so that if they would like to try to pursue that issue, that they could, um, hence the reason why we would be, uh, putting them on notice of the change, and, and delaying the change until, uh, September two thousand and twenty, um, certainly there would be , uh, many employee groups that we would be bringing in less individuals, because we're going to, um, again, abort threshold, uh, and, um, there would be some groups where we would be bringing in more people, so it would, it would depend, um, on certainly the experiences. If a particular employee.
Sorry, a follow-up question, because right off the top of my head, what comes to mind is, is the EA's collective agreement, because they are the larger group, correct me if I'm wrong, and I could be wrong, other than the OECTA group, the old country and the OECTA, correct, right, because they're the ones?
I, I, I'm trying not to, uh, I know we're, we're kind of on the, a borderline of what should be in camera and what should not be, and so I don't know how we get into that, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we're not going to step into camera, but I'm in your hands in terms of.
I think we need to move into camera, then, in regards to this, because I, I, I have some concerns around the impact, especially in some of the negotiations, so.
So, I'm happy to, to do that, thank you.
Does that, do we do that now, or do we do that to be in camera, do we do it now? Yeah, we have no guests, so we're going to, do I, can I get a motion to move in camera?
Can I?
Trustee An Tomasi, seconded by trustee DeRosa, all in favor? All in favor, except you're opposed, trustee O'Brien? We're, we're going to continue this discussion, it's just going to go in camera. Oh, okay, no, it's, it's, it's not about, it's about this policy, and the impact on the employee groups, okay. So, this is- So, can we have more of a fulsome, uh, discussion in camera in regards to this, and then we can decide before we continue on, and then you can decide if you're in conflict or not, okay, so all in favor of moving into camera? Okay. Item six point three, administrative procedure VI dash oh seven A, school bus accident procedure, uh, superintendent law.
Yes, thank you, through Madam Chair, I'd like to defer to, uh, senior manager Fred Tebow.
Uh, through Madam Chair, you'll notice I like the color red. Um, in terms of the changes that occurred here, you'll note, I, I think this, right at the top of the page, um, this hasn't really been looked at since, uh, May of two thousand nine, and since then, th- this is kind of a transitional period, which was the inception of the Halton Student Transportation Services at that time, so a lot of the things that were embedded within this, uh, this procedural framework were things that were existing prior to the inception of the consortia, since then, a lot of these, uh, parameters have been, uh, replaced by HSTS, uh, procedures that are harmonized with, uh, both boards and ourselves, and at its core and in its spirit, it has the same, um, effect, it's just the, the way that we don't want to duplicate or cause any creation, so we've reconciled those things, um, another piece that we've also added into it, aside from putting it into our format, adding references and so forth, and consistency, is that we've also introduced the notion of, um, things that fall outside of the responsibilities of HSTS, namely field trips, and also adding some protocols for principals or school administration to follow in the event that there is an incident on a, um, field trip-related transportation service, so they have similar, um, protocols to follow, but still slightly different because those involved are different than if it were to be a home-to-school transportation. So, we've added those sections, as well as we renumbered the, the procedure in light of this as well, um, and just another note, and this is an oversight on my part, in section two point two, on page three of eight, uh, you'll notice that, uh, two point two point one, as well as two point two point five, in terms of the individuals that are to be contacted in the event of any incidences, um, initially we had put in there that, uh, director Daley and the manager of strategic communications, um, Andrew Swinon, would be communicating only in events where injuries happen, because this, they, they do occur sometimes, um, we'll just say that it'll cover any, in, any incident, we'll let both parties know, just in vent, in the event that they need to respond, um, to media inquiries, or if there's any parental concerns that go straight to the director, um, they'll be aware of what's happening, um, other than that, as I said, it's just, uh, was a consistency exercise in bringing it up to the, uh, standard that we have today, uh, so that is the, the main reason for the, the number of changes, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Director.
Uh, through Madam Chair, just a question, uh, for clarification, does this procedure need any, uh, approval from HSTS, or, uh, how does it work?
Uh, through Madam Chair, uh, in, in terms, no, it doesn't require approval from HSTS, however, HSTS has reviewed it to make sure that the certain sections are in conformity or are not in contravention with their own, um, policies and, or, not policies, uh, more procedures, so we've made sure that they, uh, are aligned, and, uh, they're, they're not in, in opposition of each other, so they've had a look at it, but they don't need approval.
Thank you. So, moving on to item six point four, administrative procedure VI dash four seven, inclement weather, transportation cancellations, and emergency school closures, um, who's taking superintendent loss?
Yeah, thank you, through Madam Chair, I'd like to defer to, uh, senior manager Fred Tebow.
Uh, through Madam Chair, uh, similar to the last one, but less red, um, we've just made a few administrative changes, the, uh, the, I guess the spirit of it and the scope of it remains the same, we've just did a little bit of cleanup again, reconciling to some of the HSTS procedures, as well as our own practices, and, uh, removing anything that was redundant or unnecessary for the, uh, the purpose of this procedure, again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can, can I ask a question? Ed, do you want to add to it?
And just to add as well, this has been reviewed by, um, the board, as well as HSTS, to ensure conformity and consistency.
Never mind, because I'm, never mind, I'll, it's for something else, it's not, it's not applicable, my question, I should rewrite my question, thank you, okay, so we're going to move on to item six point five, administrative procedure VI dash five seven, fees for learning materials, program curricular and co-curricular activities, superintendent loss.
Yes, through Madam Chair, um, there's some minor changes on here, we're just kind of clearing up, or cleaning up some of the wording and such, as well as we added a reference with the Ministry of Education, fees for learning materials and activity guidelines. Not for any questions.
Moving right along to item six point six, administrative procedure VI dash zero five, secondary school cafeteria commissions, superintendent loss.
Thank you to you, Madam Chair, uh, I guess one of the, the large change on this is we, now we actually distribute these funds monthly and no longer quarterly, uh, everything else is just minor changes to wording.
Okay, moving on to item six point seven, administrative procedure VI dash zero six, charitable receipts, superintendent loss.
Thank you to you, Madam Chair, uh, again, we added the advantage section, uh, for clarification as well, under the, um, issuance of receipts section, we changed some of the wor- not changed some of the wording, but kind of corrected some of the wording, um, and also we removed under the section, um, so, under the non-cash receipts, gifts in kind, we actually took out the limit of a thousand dollars for, um, some of the information that we're requesting, and the reason we did that was for some of our vehicles that we're receiving, we wanted to receive that same, somewhere, I shouldn't say only for vehicles, but the main thought was anyways for, uh, vehicle donations, we have, a lot of them are under a thousand dollars, but we thought it'd be important to get that same information, so we kind of just removed that greater than a thousand dollar threshold.
Any questions? Nope, moving on to item, uh, six point eight, administrative procedure VI dash three one, trust funds, superintendent loss.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, um, we cleaned up, through this, um, procedure, we cleaned up some of our wording, again, um, we actually, under disbursement of the trust funds, we actually increased the, um, total percentage, we initially had it, could not exceed a thousand dollars, we increased that to two thousand dollars, given that the change, um, and those who have children in university will realize that the cost of was put into place, we increased it to a thousand, or to two thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, um, again, we changed some of the word regarding close accounts, um, when award, oh, sorry, when the award is, um, how it is forwarded, and as well, we added some and cleaned up some of the, um, I guess suggested criteria, uh, the Catholic values, for example, was put in, and under the award was be, was redundant, we thought, so we just kind of removed that section, and again, I'm just open for any, uh, any questions or comments.
Any questions? Okay, moving on to item six point nine, administrative procedure VI dash two eight, selection and appointment of positions of academic administrative responsibilities, superintendent O'Hara.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, the changes that are before you reflect the amendments that were made to policy three seventeen, so, again, happy to answer any questions that you may have, thanks.
Trustee O'Brien.
Uh, thank you, through you, Madam Chair, um, on December seventeenth, we made an amendment to our hiring policy, um, we added the phrase, the final candidate in each hiring situation will be presented to the board for approval in camera, um, I don't see that change reflected in this procedure.
I, I believe, Stephanie, and you'd have to correct me, but is that not covered off in the policy? Wasn't that change covered off in the policy?
Uh, I believe the change was covered off in the policy, and that's why it wasn't reflected here, um, my understanding is that the changes that were made to this procedure in particular, applied to A and three, to reflect the numbers that were, um, changed in the policy with respect to three trustees and A superintendent, I don't think we transferred all of the other pieces from the policy to the procedure.
Thank you, but shouldn't the, uh, procedure reflect the policy?
If I may, the, the changes to the procedure, uh, and again, the procedure goes into detail around the makeup of the interview teams, uh, so that's the intention of what we, we changed, was, again, the, um, the makeup of the interview teams, so I think the policy's, policy's clear in terms of the fact that things need to go back to trustees for approval.
Really doesn't matter to me. Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, except that it says, under selection criteria for the proposition, under one, it says the recommendations of the select committee will be submitted by the executive officer of human resources to the director of, of education for approval, so if it mentions that for approval and procedure, um, shouldn't it really that reflect what it says in the policy that comes with the board for approval?
Yeah.
So, can that change be made?
Just to be consistent, I think, I would, I, you know, uh, through you, Madam Chair, as long as director Daley and, and, uh, superintendent are in agreement, I would say it probably should be consistent.
We, we, we need to make some additional changes, because the intention of that line really was that, okay, so, there's a committee that needs, and, and so, for example, whether it's principals, uh, uh, or, uh, vice principals, there's other, uh, committees here, that ultimately the director approves them all, right, and so, certainly the director would still have obligations under the policy to then go and take certain things forward to, to the board of trustees, so i- if we're changing, I think we need, it's, it's an addition, additional line that we would need to add in there under one, which we can do.
Give me that, okay.
Good, yeah, okay, moving on to item six point one zero, this is new, um, exemption from instruction related to the human development, sexual health expectations, so, to superintendent bow.
Through you. Through you, Madam Chair, um, superintendent Prokazin's not here this evening, so I'll speak to it, it is the corresponding procedure, we passed that policy, and this is the corresponding procedure which goes through the operational aspects in terms of requesting and initiating and implementing the exemption for instruction.
And this is all ministry mandated?
It's all ministry mandated, it came right out of the PPM, uh, one sixty-two, which was used to develop the policy.
Thank you. So, moving on to item six point one one, for your review, the upcoming agenda items, and please note that our next policy meeting is scheduled for February twenty fifth, um, in light of the consultations that are taking place this week in regards to uniform, and that's just a reminder for anybody watching or who have forgotten, that is, tomorrow is Oak, uh, in Burlington, right, Wednesday's Burlington, Thursday's, or is it the opposite, tomorrow's Milton, no, tomorrow, tomorrow's Burlington, Thursday's Milton, so, that's why our meeting is pushed to the February twenty fifth policy, so just a reminder for those of you who've blocked your calendar off for the entire year, um.
Question, I'm sorry, what time is that meeting tomorrow?
Seven, seven o'clock? And you can go to either one.
All right.
Good job, by the way, on the communication on that, it was pretty, uh, I enjoyed the reminder.
We have, uh, I, I'm regretting that reminder, we have over a hundred people for each session, yeah, we'll see.
Hundreds, not bad, I was going to say, yeah, we, we want them to, to respond, so, good luck, sorry, um, so then we'll go to, I think we're, we're done, we have no miscellaneous items, we don't have to move back into camera, because we've done that twice already tonight, uh, can I get a motion to excuse absent committee members? Okay, trustee An Tomasi makes a, a motion to, uh, trustee O-Her, um, O'Hern, Chernoda, seconded by trustee Carabella, all in favor? Everyone is in favor, um, and a motion to adjourn, trustee DeRosa, seconded by trustee Agnew, and trustee Duarte, can you lead us in closing prayer?
Please join me in the sign of our faith, and we'll say the Hail Mary, the son of the, Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is thee, blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus, holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now, and in thy hour, Father, amen.